I know. I don't know how to-
Filter mode.
It's on nighttime mode and I don't know how to change it.
On alien mode.
Alien mode.
True, must be. Okay. Should be easy. I was gonna say here in the message. One, two, three might have been good for today. I was on the road a lot today. Sorry.
I smell, I smell.
I liked to talk to you. I know. Except I was in Lincoln, so it's, uh... I was-
It'll get better, I know.
And then I was in Josh.
I haven't been saying a word here, I'm just laughing.
Making fun of me. I went to Plom and did Jack's work. We had a tea. Buttered onions, which were really good. Anyways, I'm making fun of me. Maybe a lot on YouTube.
I wouldn't even have known if you hadn't said anything. I'm just trying to urge along yourself.
I was trying to spread myself. He's coming in here at some barbecue place for supper or something.
He's got two inches of voice left in him.
We'll call tonight's community of local city council floor. I'll bring to your attention, we have somewhat, just a little change on the agenda. Nothing that's really changed, but there was a misprint on an ordinance. It should be 2177. That's the only change on the, on the agenda. Mandy, would you take a roll call, please?
Bob Richard.
Yes.
Kent Miller.
Yes.
Rick Brown. Tony Gingler.
Yes.
Matt Audi.
Here.
Lloyd Latrell.
Present.
Robert Peterson.
Present.
Thank you. If you'd stand with me for the invocation, the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful spring-like weather that we have. I think we're all ready to be out in the open and enjoy the sun. And planning season will be soon upon us and we're all excited about that. Thank you for allowing us to assemble this evening and to conduct the business of our fair city. Give us the wisdom to make the proper decisions that's the best for our city. And continue to bless our nation and our leaders in the political process that we're going through. Be with our servicemen as they serve us here and around the world. And also for the law enforcement in our country. This job seems to be getting increasingly harder. Keep them safe as they do their jobs to protect us and our community. In your name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that what you said?
At least.
Boy, do you have anything this evening?
The only thing I have is that department head seemed to be really scarce tonight.
Yeah, we got a, got a thin crowd this evening. Heather made it. Matt?
Hi, Matt.
Bob? Connie? Bob?
Nope.
Okay. I got a couple things I might bring up, but I'll let Katie go first. She might talk about it first.
I have a couple things as well. I'm totally not. Okay, I provided you with the website for the code. It is now all up to date. No longer says draft on it. So anybody can go out and look at that. If you're curious about a specific code provision. I wanted to clarify something that was in the newspaper. Maybe I'm the only one that saw this and thought it looked odd. But the grant for the airport lighting is a $25,000 grant that we got from the FAA. And the paper makes some reference that the city's, it was a matching grant. And the city portion was $300,000. And I saw that and went, oh my gosh, no, that's not right. So I had asked Sharon to run a correction. I think she's going to. At some point, they tried to combine two articles. And the overall, the other grant, our huge grant, is a $2.7 million project. And our portion is close to 300. But for the airport lighting grant, it's a 10% match. So our portion's right around $28,000. And the grant's $25,000. So I just wanted to clarify that on the record so that we thought we were getting $300,000 lights. Planning Commission met last Tuesday and made their final revisions to the zoning regulations. And they have chosen a date for the public hearing on that. It is April the 26th. That will be published in the paper. The county's also been notified. So I just wanted to get that up there. There is a vacancy on the Planning Commission. One of our Planning Commission members that resided outside of Citywood has gone on to be on the county Planning Commission. So we right now currently have a vacancy for someone that resides within the two-mile area outside of Citywood. Procedure for filling that is to go and fill out an application of interest in the city office. And then if the mayor so chooses, he would bring that forward to you guys for an appointment. We will talk about tonight, the league's city administrators position search, something that they do. I've also contacted a couple other private firms that do that. And hopefully, and I told, ask them to give you their proposals by the March 1st meeting. Just so we have more than one thing to look at. Just, just for different options. Sometimes, you know, the league is great, but sometimes they're not maybe as good as maybe some private firms. So, I don't know. Just gonna look at them, see what we can come up with. But I will have that by the March 1st meeting. And then we can make a decision hopefully on that. Lastly, with regard to code enforcement. First of all, there was some concern raised at the last meeting about a couple of properties. For sure, one of those properties has been addressed on her seat by a attorney. He was served, he came to court, he pled not guilty. So we have it set for trial. So, and that's a yard, parking in the yard issue. A couple of the other concerns, I believe Chris has been following up on. What we try to do with the front yard parking is if it's a first-time violator, we like to send them a warning letter saying, hey, we have this ordinance. Please follow it. I think he's done that with a couple of them. But just to update everyone on how code enforcement works and how it works in the court process. Does not necessarily have to be Chris that brings the complaint to my office to get filed with the court. If a citizen wants to make a complaint about anything from dogs to parking to a nuisance, junk vehicle, they can do that, but they have to be my witness in court. So what I would like is some sort of written statement from the witness that says, this is what I saw, this is what happened, address, date, you know, information like that. Photos are very helpful in court. Otherwise, it's just your, the witness's word against the defendant's word. And then I can file a complaint. I think there's some confusion. People think that they have to go through Chris for that process. And they do. If they don't want to come and be willing to testify, for example, against their neighbor in court, then Chris has to be the one to witness it. And Chris has been my witness in court. But if somebody, just a citizen, for example, their neighbor's dog keeps running in their yard. And, you know, they told Chris about it, but he just hasn't quite witnessed it ever. They can take photos of the dog, provide me with a written summary of what happened, how often it happens, when it happens. And then I can file a complaint. And then that person would be my witness in court against the defendant. So, just some clarification on that. Yes?
Would it be a conflict of interest if one of us city council members that was brought up, if some, if a citizen comes up to one of us, they don't want to go to court. So we go there and we witness it. We file a complaint. Or would that be an issue for me?
I would still, I mean, I'd give it a shot. If they, if they want to challenge that as a conflict, they're not subject to the judge at that point. But if you actually witnessed it and saw it, and it was a violation, a clear violation, and I filed a complaint, I think you have a good chance of being successful there. What we can't have is secondhand information. Having, you know, somebody telling you and then you tell me. So, it's just some information there that anybody can, if anybody has questions about how that works, you can call me. My other city that I have, City Attorney Board does not have code enforcement officer. They're on the police department. But we do have a support. And this is how we handle the cases. The person who was, who witnessed the violation brings it into the city clerk. We prepare a complaint and we go to court. And then that person is my witness. So that's always an option. If you don't feel like you're getting a response, or if you don't feel like you can just find, you know, our code enforcement officer just can't quite get there at the right time. So, going to, without further ado, any questions?
Katie, I, you know, obviously, everybody's gonna know who told me this. When I was on the Planning Commission, I had some complaints about properties. And I was told, well, you can't file a complaint because you're on a controlling body. Well, if I can't file a complaint...
You can't file it. I would file it. And you wouldn't.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't, I was told I wasn't allowed to lodge complaints.
Well, and that's, that can certainly be a challenge that then we would ask the judge to address.
Yeah.
You know, I see things, I obviously can't file it, be the witness. But I see things and so then I give Chris an address and say, go check this out. It's the way I prefer to do it. And I would prefer that that's the way that you guys handle it. But if it absolutely doesn't happen that way, then we'll take it from the judge. And if she thinks that's a problem.
Well, I hope that the press will get this out because, you know, I've had so many people tell me that they've had a complaint, called in, and nothing's ever happened. So they can aggression to you.
They do. And it needs to be written.
Yeah.
You know, I can't have them lend me a voicemail and say, this is what happened. You know, take these people to court.
Follow the guidelines.
Yep. I need jurisdiction. I need an address. I need a name of the defendant. I need a date. I need details. And then we'll go from there to see what type of a violation. And another thing about city court is, we do it once a month. So it's not like district court where they have docket days once a week. It's once a month. So it's a little bit slower process, but it's what we have.
Now, that picture I sent you and I gave you the date, the time and everything, would that be sufficient or would I still have to testify if it came to?
You have to, if you send me, whoever, if anybody sends me a picture, I have to have that witness. Whoever took that picture has to be in court to testify that they took the picture and that that picture is a depiction of what they actually saw.
Well, I think some stuff's been done.
Good, good. Well, I, yeah, I just sent all this on and like I said, I, so don't hesitate. If you see something, let me, first, you know, I, I see stuff all the time bugging me. So I just tell them, hey, go check this out.
Well, I'm just glad it's clarified and so that everybody-
Yeah. And if you have any questions, contact me. So that's all I have.
Thanks.
Thanks, Katie. She answered what I was gonna, this is about. With that, you know, the staff, the meeting with the staff, working, I think you guys got the report on what they're, they're up to and trying to do. And trying to keep busy and get ready for these projects and advance something that's gonna be-
That's gotta be an ongoing thing. I really like that for me.
Yeah, I think if we request it, I don't think it's that hard to generate. It's already generated for their staff meetings and stuff.
Well, it kind of lets us know what's happening. You know, I get people asking me all the time, what's this? And I say, well, I don't know. Nobody tells me. I think it's a neat deal if it's not out of the way to do it.
Yeah. Boy, are the two or three weeks of staff notes incorporated into the single report that we get? Or are we just getting the week before the meeting?
The most current one. You know what I mean? Like if I send the agenda out on Friday-
So if something last week that wasn't in this report, we just miss it?
Well, if it's, you know, kind of routine, you know? Most of it's routine, daily, boring things. But if it's still ongoing, it's still in there.
It's fine. Would you like every week's? Well, you know, if there's anything that's a big report, there's, I think it used to be in there. Oh, that's fine. I mean, we can compile those. I mean, that was the purpose we're asking for it anyway, so we know what they were doing. Sure. That's why I don't think that would be a problem. Glenn said it might be every week, so he knew around 15 of them. Mandy, you want to compile those and then the next council pack of what, both weeks in there?
Maybe also on some of them, they're using acronyms.
Okay.
I have no idea what those secret codes are. So if they could maybe spell those out for me.
Sure.
Some of us may not know what those are.
Anything you want them to be.
That's what's here.
That's fine. We've got an individual that has expressed interest in being an interim manager. We haven't received anything from him yet. And so hopefully we'll get met with him next week. He's retired. He's expressed interest if he's, he would like to work five days a week. And like come in on Mondays and go home Fridays. And he's been, and this is all he does now, is do an interim work for cities and counties. And he comes very highly recommended from Dennis Kissinger, who was a former administrator in this alliance. So we'll kind of keep everybody impressed on that as we move forward. And hopefully the next council meeting, we can have something for him to go with. So we're working through it. Staff's doing a good job. Mandy's doing a tremendous job. And I'll save another comment for when we get down here to the bonds. And I just want to comment on that just a little bit when we get there. So with that being said, does anybody else have anything you want to comment on? We'll move on to the consent agenda. If there's not any questions at this time, I ask for a motion to accept in its entirety.
So that's a move.
It's a move by Councilman Peterson. Do we accept the consented agenda in its entirety? Do I have a second? A second by Councilman Hody. Any discussion? No further discussion? Mandy, would you please take a roll call vote?
Gingler.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Audi. Peterson.
Yes.
Latrell.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening is the ordinance 2177 authorizing, authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds, 2016-a. This was the great news that we got from Piper Jaffrey last week. But- These are the same bonds that we discussed a couple, three weeks ago. Right. And they, and they finally got to a point where they, the interest was down enough that- And that's locked in at that- Yeah, they locked it in. And I think on the average, it was like 2.18%. And part of the reasoning that we got such a favorable rating is the amount of funding that we had in all of our, our accounts. And so we can commend Mandy and her staff and for keeping that there. And it definitely paid off big dividends for us to have good finances. So, but that's, that was another part of, that was passed on to me. That that was part of the reasoning of the favorable refinancing rate. So I commend our staff for the job that they did.
I move that we approve the ordinance 2177.
Move by Councilman Latrell that we approve ordinance 2177, authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds. Second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Richard. Any further discussion? No discussion? Those in favor, excuse me, Mandy, would you take a roll call since it's an ordinance?
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Gingler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Audi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2016. Is that dash eight or five the correct one? I've got two different numbers here.
2016-8.
Okay. 2016-8 authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of general obligation bonds, 2016-a. No discussion? I entertain a motion to approve. Then a motion to approve by Councilman Richard. That we approve Resolution 2016-A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. Any further discussion? No further discussion? Mandy, please take a roll call vote.
Gingler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Audi?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is the CDVG rehabilitation demolition bids. Now, this was because of a change in contractor?
Right, correct. The contractor had a, yeah, an injury in accident. So he was unable to complete the work.
Boy.
Are we on a timeline for getting this project done?
Correct.
And are we still gonna fall within that timeline?
I hope so.
Because of the-
Yeah, the lateness.
Where the money comes from and-
Right.
Didn't you have six months to do it?
They, the whole contract's two years. So we can file an extension. I hope we don't have to. But Carol has been very good at the Planning Commission about being on top of it so that we're all certain that we're not that far behind. So instead of letting him heal and come back and redo those, we've kind of said he had a certain timeline to get that done and he didn't. So we would like to award it to the next person.
Yeah, they do a great job over there.
They do. She does a fantastic job. She's been on it. And we have some housing board members. Kent's on the board, Andrew Graybon's on the board, and Ruth Emerson. And so she's very good about sending information out and everyone replies quickly. And so it's, it's worked very well.
Okay.
We've been pleased.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Any further discussion? Entertaining motion?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilman Miller that we accept the CDVG rehabilitation demolition bids. Seconded by Councilman Latrell. Any further discussion? No further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is the KDOT cost estimate for observation and inspection in the amount of $106,910 upon the contingent of KDOT awarding the K14 project construction contract. This is just part of keep moving forward.
Yeah.
And this goes against our share of the project.
Yeah. And I asked, dear, he must have forgot to come tonight. I should have reminded him. But he said he put it on his calendar. But he would explain it better than I would have. But that's just exactly how he said it. It's just something that the engineer out of Schwaben at Manhattan put together. And it's just a routine thing to keep things going, is what it is. And he, he specifically asked to have it contingent upon receiving the grants. And he feels that it's gonna be, it's overly estimated here. He doesn't feel that I'll even come close to that, is what he told me. So.
Any other question?
This is just for that, can we say the first section that was, we did not get awarded or whatever last year?
I think so.
It's not combining both sections of the highway. It's still that original.
That original one that we-
One that we're fussing over with, right?
Right.
Okay?
Yeah, this is your, this is your inspection and engineering. It's currently outbid approved right now for the construction. This is just your oversight of the project.
Okay.
So if we're, we don't go forward, then we don't pay.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Entertaining motion, it's a second. Been moved by Councilman Gingler that we approve the KDOT cost estimate for observation inspection. Now, second. Second by Councilman Audi. Any further, any further discussion? No further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is the domestic violence proclamation. Any questions or comments about the domestic violence?
I don't have one.
Yes.
And that is, it's the middle of the month.
Pardon?
It's the middle of the month and the whole month was supposed to be out.
Yeah. I kind of started a little bit late.
I'll move that, yeah.
We accept. Got a second? Any further discussion?
I'd like to have a read.
Okay. I'll read it if you guys want me to. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
We can use this one.
If you want to read it. Where's this, this is come from? I'm in Concordia.
It's called D-VAC, which is the domestic violence organization for, for our area.
Do they have it up here in?
No. Concordia is the closest. And then Salina would be the next closest. Yeah.
I'd read it, but I think everybody sitting here is ready. Okay. Next item on the agenda is adjournment.
I shall move-
Been moved by Councilman Peterson that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Richard. Any further discussion? No further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. We will go into the work session. Katie, do you have anything else at this time?
No, I sure don't.
Okay. Well, the next thing would be the LEAP's proposal that they sent out. And that dollar amount on that was $4,053.66. And we'll pay half of that upon accepting the LEAP's offer. And then, you know, I think we ought to look at some other, we requested they come out. And, you know, we had the snowstorm, they couldn't come out. And then it just, they didn't want to come out this time. So I think if we, in our best interest, maybe, maybe look at some others. I think we have some time. And Katie, thought you could have that before the next, at the next meeting, correct?
Yes, yeah. I've got a couple of firms that I've been in contact with. One of them, I've actually contacted about potentially working with us on a new personnel policy and completely revamping and updating that. So they're a company that does all kinds of things. And another service that they offer is professional recruitment. So that's one company. And then the other one is actually the company that Baldwin City used to hire Glenn. Since I, they came recommended as well. So I've contacted them. So hopefully by March 1st, I'll have both of those. And then we can look at all three maybe. There's no question those other ones are going to be more expensive, but probably also more experienced. So we'll have to just look at everything and see what we want to do.
I guess I'm a little disappointed that they're as close as Topeka. And they could come out here and visit.
Yeah. For the price of charge.
They want the charge. Well, they wanted to do a tele, a conference call. And I just, in my opinion, a conference call for this topic is not a good thing. I mean, if we're gonna pay you to come out and be with us and show you. I don't think she's real committed to it. So, and that's why I like Katie's idea that we move.
Did we deny the conference call interview?
I did, because they wanted to do it. The, you know, they let us know, well, yeah, we're gonna do a conference call. And we told them earlier that we didn't want a conference call. And she, and then it goes this back, well, I didn't realize that, you know, back and forth. Or that's not what you said. Blah, blah, blah. But hey, that's, you know, we're doing business with them. I want to see them here in person to talk to us about our business and-
I think we're on table with still next meeting.
Yeah, it's, it's, we'll wait and see what we have from the other people.
Yeah, what we'll have next time basically is three written proposals. And from there, you know, if you want somebody to come out, the folks I have talked to are out of Overland Park.
Park, and then the other one's out of, what is it, Ohio, another state, Ohio or something, but Liberty, Missouri is their closest office, so, anyway, there.
Well, the, I, the people that were recruiting, checking out, went, and I talked to them at great length, and then they, they drill into them pretty good when they call you up and ask you questions. I was, I was kind of impressed with them, they're very polite. They, it was a nice half-hour conversation. I kind of like that, so the option is to look at some more of those. Anybody else have anything else at this time?
Do you want to talk about the...
Yes. What's your address? I can't.
The CDVG, did you want to talk about that a little bit? The water?
Oh, yeah, yes, 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 I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's all right.
I didn't write it by noon.
I know, that's all right, I'm sure. Once, maybe a quarter, I think, we get an update from Community Development Block Grant out of Topeka, and this is what the CDVG underneath the Department of Commerce said. That's one of those acronyms. So, these are some proposed changes that they have to two thousand and sixteen and seventeen, and the one that I thought might be of interest to us, here's, here's exactly what it says, and I don't know an awful lot about it, but here's what it says. They want to relaunch the Water Improvement Regionalization Grant Funding Program in conjunction with Rural Development and the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Two or more entities will be eligible to apply for up to one million to address their water needs in a holistic regional manner. So, I went to, I went to NCRBC and said, exactly what does holistic regional manner mean? And does two or more entities include the fact that we already sell water to rural water?
Number one.
Right, number one. Doug thought that it did include that, but no one really has an idea what holistic regional manner means. So, what happens is...